It must be having a special meeting.
Because I do have questions. And I don't know if I'll be able to vote on it tonight. But I'm only one vote out of seven. So if everyone else is comfortable, we can certainly go to vote. But I just, I don't know if you'll be able to answer the questions just because it's their budgetary. But I can shoot.
I mean, if they're, they're hard numbers to Martha's, you know, that they're specific to her. If we needed to come back for another date, I would just have to know tomorrow what the absolute dead date is to get this down to town hall. And we could schedule it around that.
It's January 29th. I mean, that's what I meant, February 29th.
Well, why don't we go through some of my questions? I know Beth has some questions. I think Zach has some questions. I don't know if Kim has some questions.
So February 29th is the date?
Yes.
So, yeah, so, so that's next Thursday, I believe. March 1st is Friday. So if you wanted to have a meeting next week with Martha here, we can do that.
I'd like to hear the questions.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't we take the questions? You might, you might be able to answer them.
Oh, I, I, okay.
And what we can't, we can carry over table or you could write them down and give them to her too. So she could, just in case if she can't be here, you have answers to them. But you may be able to answer them.
Okay.
So the first question, and I emailed it, but I didn't see, I never got an answer, was about the bathroom, the renovation of the bathroom and Fund 25. Can we use Fund $25 for the bathroom?
So, and Mr. Florio's not here. We have ordered the stalls for that bathroom. So I think we took it out of maintenance supplies for this year. And we have, you're talking TBS next door.
Yeah.
So we have, we have taken care of ordering those from the current maintenance budget, not using Fund 25.
Okay, so it's already, we don't have to, my whole thing is we don't have to put that in the capital budget.
No, we can strike that. We also can strike the ARPA donation of the freezer and refrigerator. At the council meeting on Tuesday night, that was approved. So we can strike the 80, I think it's 82,000, 82, wasn't it? Eighty, something like that. You guys round up though, right?
We rounded up.
So we want to round up 82.
Well, no, it was 80,000. We rounded it up to 80.
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get an extra thousand. So 81.
81.
So now 80 changes 82.
We're rounding it to 81,000.
Okay.
So that should cover any incidental expenses that you have for the roof and ceiling tiles and refrigerators.
So those two can come off of capital.
Okay.
81, and then the stalls have already been ordered.
And that's all we needed for that bathroom?
Yeah, they did the boys' room too there. So our custodians will do these too. They measured them, John did all of that and put it through. So those two you can take off of capital.
Okay.
Okay?
My other question, like I was just looking through the budget. And I saw like, I added up the lines that we were, were reduced, right? And trying to get a sense of like, what truly was triggering the increase. But I did have a few questions about kind of reductions to the budget is, and that I didn't see. And I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but how much will splitting the Stanley T utilities really assist us? Like what's the round?
There is a number in here somewhere.
So we, we sent that out back to, and it's broken down.
I just needed rough number. I don't need the exact.
No, I'm gonna give you the exact.
We got that somewhere. Let me try to get on the wifi.
Yeah, it's right here. So it's, are we talking Anthony? It's, it's.
Right, because he said he was gonna send it June 30th, and we asked for.
Yeah, so it's gonna come back to us. So it's, oil is 41,000. Electricity is 21,000. And water is 755. So 41, 21, and 755.
62, 755.
Yep.
I'm just, I'm gonna round up if you don't keep it in mind.
Yeah, don't round down. Don't round down.
No, no.
That doesn't help us.
My other question was, as far as the solar fields go, I know we're not, nothing's happening right now. But is there a point person who's following up on that? Do we have someone who's taking point to aggressively look at that?
Very aggressively.
Who is it?
Very, through central office, through Anthony Esposito, through the company. Anthony Esposito is the town point person who's been working directly with them. And we have been contacting them weekly on that. So we're still waiting. Anthony is still waiting. He has been a thorn in their side and will continue to be for recapturing those monies that, you know, should be offsetting the new high school. The new high school is our biggest draw, you know, down there at that end. Plus, it's also the intermediate school and it's the auditorium. So you have three large structures there.
Jerome 2, I think, right?
Right, but the three biggest ones are that campus.
Quick, another que, I'm sorry. I should have asked them, but I, you know, I kind of do this when I have time. What, I noticed that the sports equipment was completely like slashed. And I know I asked you this, but I just wanna make sure. We already bought it.
Yeah, we pre-purchased. We pre-purchased. Have you noticed our kids and their uniforms, they look pretty sharp.
Like, yeah, I see a lot of sports. That's the one thing at the high schools I see a lot of.
Yeah, we stand, Lloyd Monley does a great job. And we have a shelf life for our sporting equipment, safety first. All of our contact sport stuff goes out every season. And then uniforms usually a five-year lifespan.
I saw we posted the middle school principal position. So will Carter be going back to the curriculum position?
He'll go back to his existing position. And we're looking for a July 1 start date for that new position.
Okay. I'm trying to look at which ones. What's the 540 advertising? Do we know what that is?
540 advertising?
Mm-hmm.
Light item.
It's light item 540.
I'm looking to see if it was one of the questions that came in from Judy.
No.
So now.
What would, what would we be?
Oh, advertising.
Is it like when we?
9500, so.
On a roller?
Yeah, whatever.
We advertise for kindergarten and preschool and?
Yeah, so anytime we take out anything for a job posting, then we have to pay for a job posting. If we put it into C T RE, which probably doesn't charge. But, you know, it could be Tuck, the Times, the Register, anything that we run, anything for registration for kindergartens or anything that we have to get out to the public, all of that would come under advertising. I mean, Martha could give you a more detailed answer to that if you wanted to email that to her. But, you know, that's the best I can do with.
That's okay.
Anything like that.
I think like that, that blurb in the, in the Tuck, the Times that they did updating, remember the one that we all love so much? And we said maybe they could do it twice a year? I don't remember.
Yeah, but this, yeah, it's more than, it's other things when we post jobs, when.
Right, but that's just another example.
Any legal notice or things that, you know, we have to get out to the public.
And cell phones, who has cell phones? I mean, I know you have a cellphone. I'm assuming the administrators.
Administrative team, all except one or possibly two have cell phones.
Does anyone else have them? It's, it's $18,000, that's why I'm asking.
So I'd have to ask either my nursing staff or custo, yeah, custodians.
Custodians, administrators, or nurses?
Nursery.
Security?
Yeah, security. My security guards allow them. Nurses? Nurses do?
I'm just thinking for 18,000, it's not three people, right? It's gonna be.
So.
I just.
It's the answer that security, nurses, administrative team, custodians.
So anyone who would be in your like business continuity plan, basically?
Yeah, so I don't know how many there are. I could find that out.
I was just curious. I was, you know, I'm assuming that it's the business continuity plan. Anyone who's in that would have the cellphone?
Right. Right. I can get a direct, an exact number for you.
This you could definitely answer. You have a few new positions in the budget, and I just wanted to get the rationale for it.
What positions specifically would you?
All of the new positions, but Zach, I know you want more detail on that.
It wasn't in the, sorry, it wasn't in the presentation that was given to us. But there was a document prior, the prior meeting, I think.
What page?
It's not a page, it's, it was a separate page outside.
Oh, it was the driver, it was the paper that had the driving.
This guy here's got this one, I don't know.
So you're talking about the coaches and the social worker?
Okay, so it would be, it would be in there.
There's three there. It's IT technician, math interventionist, and third grade teacher. Those are the three that were, now that could have been washed away after.
Yeah, no, I think we cleared all of those.
All of those were cleared, they're no longer there.
They're no longer there, okay.
Yeah, good.
Is any part of our special education reimbursable? Do we get it from the state?
It is a process, and Sarah L. Burdy is here. And I'll have her come up. And any questions you have relating to special education, cost transportation, student enrollment, out placements, anything reimbursable to us, she will answer.
Yeah, I just wanna.
That was a long list.
Yeah, I just want it down and dirty.
But those are the things that are gonna come up for special education. If it was an outplacement or a transportation issue, or what do we reimburse them?
So the, the funds that we get every year changes. And so part of the reason for that is that, one, it's based initially off of our per pupil expenditure. So our per pupil expenditure, what we spend on a regular student, a typical student who doesn't receive special education services, around $20,000. If you take that amount and you multiply it times four and a half, that becomes the threshold. Those students, we have eight of them right now in total, who meet that threshold, meaning that we spend four and a half times plus, that, that amount, or anything above that, we will receive a percentage of that. The challenge is that the percentage isn't announced to us, and it changes throughout every year. So right now, we have, so for example, we put in, every month I go in and I have to certify certain amounts. In the event that we bring a student back, they might have anticipated giving us a greater percentage back. But because we brought them back, we're spending less money.
And they adjust?
They do adjust it. So our first check that we get is usually in January, February, it goes directly to the town. That's kind of the process. And then the remainder, so the remaining 25%, comes to us at the end of the year. We're only getting a percentage of that. So historically, it was a flat percentage across the board, 80% for all districts. A couple of years ago, they decided to tier districts based on size. Since then, our 80% has now turned in, I just wrote it down. We are now looking at about a 68% return. But we don't always know what that's going to be. And so we had some unexpected changes in our excess costs this year. So where we received a fairly large chunk in that January timeframe, because that student is no longer meeting the threshold, we're, we're going to be getting even less in June. But again, that goes directly to the town. And so historically, in the years that I've been here, that's always been part of the conversation with regards to the budget. So it's my experience that it's, the budget's been reduced, knowing that that amount's coming in. But that's only in the time that I've been here, so that's my.
Did I get?
And from January to June, if a child or multiple come into our school district who would need to be outplaced, would you get reimbursement for that in June?
Only if they meet the threshold. So our threshold, so we would have to spend greater than $93,000 in order to, for them one to even make that first step. Now, if it's, we get a hundred dollars over that, we're likely not going, I mean, it's a, it's a very small fraction. We only have a handful of students. Again, we're talking about eight students in total. None of our in-district students currently meet that threshold. But that happens all the time. We have students that move in, but if we don't spend that $93,000 on them, we're not going to be receiving anything. Even though, you know, we're only anticipating basically a $20,000. So there's still a lot more that we're spending based on those services. It's just, even if it's a hundred dollars under that $93,087, we're not gonna receive any of that.
Rose, I have a quick question. Do you want us to have some kind of an estimate on what we're expecting for reimbursement for the budget?
They, what they usually do give us is, because this is.
An estimation?
It's prior, isn't it?
Nope.
No, it's, it's, it's the same year, so we'll be getting it in like the end of the year, so I'm thinking June, July?
First payment, we should, if it hasn't already been received by the town, it should be received shortly. Because the first one typically comes January, February. And then the second check will typically come around June. But again, it's, it's very, even though it's this year, it's still very much a moving target because of those kind of unexpected pieces.
So do you want us to try to guesstimate that?
I think we do. Martha usually puts it right into the budget once we have a clear number. I don't think we have that just yet, because again, they haven't landed on our percentage of reimbursement yet.
We should definitely try to have that before we submit our budget.
Well, we don't have it before we submit.
I think you usually tell us when we do our budget consultations in April, they have a better.
Okay, and you're okay with that?
Well, that's what we do every year.
Okay. Well, every year we get like almost 0% for some reason. So I'm trying to really be prepared so that when we go in, our questions, we don't have as many questions, right? Like, so I'm hoping that us asking questions here and then having Rose here to ask questions, it goes a lot smoother during our budget conversations, because every year, I, well, it's only been eight that I've been on the board. But every year I walk out of there and I feel unprepared and foolish. And on my last year of being on the board, I'd really, really like to go out with it smooth. That's my goal for this year. So, okay.
Can I ask something off of that?
Yes, of course. So Vicki here, Rose, is there, my first budget, there was a student who spoke about an injury he was in town for the ambulance, like he was there speaking on like the behalf of them. And it was very powerful to hear somebody not just talking, money figures, like it was, no longer just kind of like black and white. It made it very real. Here's a student talking about something that affected them. Would it be advantageous of us to bring a personal level to this? Or is it just kind of you guys prefer money figures, that's it?
I don't know what kinds of examples to talk about.
So like, if we had like a staff member come and talk about how budgets affect them, if we had the ambulance.
We don't have any control over how you spend the money that is given to you.
Correct, so that's our personal side, does it help, does it not help?
Because if we, we don't have that, we don't have that control to say, okay, we want to keep it here, so we'll look something else to cut or whatever. That's not our control, that's your control.
But I think what, I think what Vicki's asking is, does the personal nature of your presentation sway the town council to provide more money for your budget or not? I believe that's what you're asking.
Yes, because if we had a group of parents, a group of staff members, a group of whatever, who's like, this is really what we need this money for, this is why we're asking for an X amount increase. Would that personal side of it help? Or do you guys just prefer these black and white numbers?
So if the staff member lives in North Ramford, they can come on April 2nd to the public hearing and, and make.
Public comment.
I mean, that's public comment, that's, that's, that's the time.
We could have every teacher.
When we present our budget, they don't. No, I know, but I'm saying, I remember specifically, like, these numbers are wrong and they're drawn out stuff, like, right? I don't remember whatever the ambulance asked for in their budget, but I remember that kid sitting there going, I broke my ankle and had to wait a long time.
It was a response time to a basketball injury for dislocation of an ankle. And with ambulances on both sides of the town, there was a rational reason for why it took as long as it did by the company. So I, I think, speaking, I don't want to speak on behalf of the ambulance services, but I know we've changed with the, the second ambulance, so.
Well, that's what. So like, you know what, we're saying like we only get minimal, would it help us to present it in this?
I mean, we could invite every teacher to come in and speak on behalf of the budget. I don't know if that's what you're looking to do though.
No, I'm just saying like.
I know why you're looking at me like I'm a con artist.
Well, I don't think that that's what you're looking to do as a ward by having 50 teachers that live in North Ramford get up and talk about why they need more money. Or parents, or anyone associated with the school district that lives in North Ramford.
I think when I was talking last time about a value story, that's very different. Like a student's personal journey through North Ramford, a value story isn't exactly what Vicki's talking about. While I think it's powerful, what she's saying, I had a slightly different vision for it.
Right, I don't think you want it. What I'm saying, and I'm not speaking for the board, is that you're looking at something different in the presentation on how you do it.
How, yeah, how the board does it, yeah, yeah, how the board does it.
That's what I'm speaking.
But not negating that that may be powerful on April 2nd.
Anyone can come.
Any school teacher, parent, student can come. And usually we have frequent flyers, like we could count on the same people every year coming to oppose and to support, right? Like, so it's actually nice. All right, I have, I have a transportation question, Scott, and this.
Is that good for special ed?
Oh, yeah, oh, we're gonna have a preschool question, so don't.
I'll just say.
So I have a question about transportation. And this is actually Zach's question, but I'm gonna.
Send it.
Yeah, because I know he's like, he's exhausted. We have, we spend a lot in transportation every year, but parents, a lot of parents drop off their children.
Yeah.
Do, how do we handle that? Do we assess how many kids?
Around the school by age, we're required by statute that we have to provide bus.
Even if they don't take it?
Even if it's one kid on a bus, we have to avail and go within a certain distance to a bus stop. If they're outside of that circle by age, we have to.
And Kim, is there any way that we can, and I don't know, I'm just asking. Is there any way we survey parents to say, are you dropping off your child or are you taking the bus so that we can use?
I still have to, I still have to provide that service.
It doesn't matter, okay.
Doesn't matter. And listen, you know, we're doing everything we can with, you know, trying to defray some of our transportation costs. I just purchased a, a, a small eight-passenger bus for my 18 to 22-year-old program through our 25 account. We have three drivers that now we will not be contracting to Daco every time we take them out to their daily field trips. So we're gonna say that bus will be paid for within probably two months. If a golf team needs to go somewhere, I don't have to pay Daco to take eight kids on a bus.
Did you do a cost savings analysis on that? That would be really nice to present.
We'll break it out once we get it and we have enough data for who's gonna use it. But we know just with the 18 to 22, it's a daily thing where I pay a minimum amount for a bus to come out, even if it's a smaller bus that I'm obligated to. Now I have a driver in the 18 to 23 in the program that have the keys that can go and take them anywhere at any time on their schedule and not be paying all that. So we'll have all that.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's something that town council would really want to hear about. Because it, it could be a cost-saving initiative, like you put money out, but how much in fact are we saving from that? And I think that's an important.
Yeah, I mean, obviously we haven't got a van, so I won't have it until next school year for data. Actually, I may, I may have it up and running for the spring.
But you can do an estimate too of what you could use it for, right? Like we can do an estimate.
Yeah, for the number of passengers.
Yeah, number of patches or number of events, we could definitely do a business plan on it.
Yeah, I mean, but.
To go along with that, so did that go out to bid or?
No, it was purchased through the state. We bought a state van, Anthony Esposito worked with Fran Marola. They have a, a bid list that they do, and it goes on the state. We've been looking for a van for about a year now. And everything we looked at had greater than 100,000 miles. They were terrible. We went out and looked at these vehicles, Park and Rec has them sitting out front. When you drive in, you'll see them. So we've been contracting with the Park and Rec workers to drive our teams when we couldn't get drivers through, through Daco, especially coming out of COVID and the impact that that had. And then we got a bug and put it in their ear, and they've been looking. And they finally found something that came on at 30,000 miles. It was a steel for about $10,000. So it's.
How many does it seat?
I, I want to say 10. It's handicap accessible, it has a wheelchair lift in the back. And I believe it's three rows, one front seat for a passenger and the driver. So the parent can sit with somebody with the driver in the front. And then we could put, I want to say 10, because they can't go to a CDL license with anything over the seating capacity. So it's, it's good news.
So is that why line 114 has driver $1,000, is that what that is?
Line 114? I don't even know what that would be. They're all licensed now, so.
So there's drivers, athletics, transportation, $1,000, so.
So that might be for.
Is that the Park and Rec people even? Yes, that's what, I asked that question. It was when we needed the Park and Rec van to go pick up some people.
Oh, yeah, we were.
We needed to pay that driver.
Yeah, yeah. So what we would do is if we, especially for middle school, if they were having an impact, high school the first priority for after-school events. If the late run was outdoing Jerome Harrison and kids had to leave earlier, thank you to Park and Rec, their two employees are able to drive the big bus out front. So they were taking our teams to events. So we pay them a rate per hour for transporting them there and back.
And so will the van?
No, it's too small.
No, 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 no. Will the van defray the cost? Will the cost come down for the transportation of paying Daco? Because you're no longer using them?
Just, just for small things like 10-passenger or less. So we know that all of our programs at the middle school and high school have less than 10 students. So we're gonna be able to do things with small groups like that. But any of the teams that have, they, most of them have greater than 10 capacity. So I, I still can have Park and Rec in a pinch help me out. That's what that $1,000 sits for, but it'll be from Daco mostly.
And you said it was an older van, right?
No, this one I just bought?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, it's a newer van.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about maintenance and?
No, no, the town does all that. Same with Park and Rec, they're gonna label it for us, everything, they maintain it, oil change, do all of that. So it's a good, good deal. Really good deal. It took a while, we sat and waited, so.
All right, my preschool question. Is the board paying for any part of preschool at this point, or is it all covered by grants still?
It's partially covered by grants. So the Smart Start grant is a funding source that we utilize that covers approximately, I think it's 15 students? Is it 15 students, 18 students? And then, so what that means is that it covers the 18 students, but the amount of money covers for a teacher and a parent at this point in time.
Okay, and is that a renewable grant?
It is a renewable grant, and we've already gotten communication that it's gonna be coming out again next year. They're changing a couple of the structures around it, and the conversation does lead me to believe that it's gonna be a longstanding grant. In the event that it is not a longstanding grant, we've been very clear in our communications that we would need to start charging a tuition. However, it would be nominal based on what people would be paying for regular. So it's not a matter of we're gonna lose our preschool if we lose the funding, we just change the funding source.
Right, so it will be able to cover the teachers in that question? Okay.
It's similar to like our FRC program.
So it's, it's, yeah, it's a lining scale?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it will still cover the teacher, so the board of it doesn't have to absorb that.
And if we, and, and our plan is, in terms of the conversations around sustainability, in the event that the funding source goes, we have a plan to sustain.
I, I like that, because that was gonna, that's like my biggest thing is that, so like grants often are like jumpstarts, right? And so unless there's kind of a crisis or some kind of corrective action plan that needs to be mitigated, and that's why the grant is being used, really, when we're getting grants, we should be thinking of a strategy to have a long-term solution if the outcomes of that grant and when it's evaluated are favorable. I mean, if not, you would just let it go by the wayside. But if it's favorable and it's helping, we should be figuring out before it's ending how we're gonna either, how we're gonna fund that in an alternate way, so, okay.
And I would anticipate, given the change in kindergarten star age and some of the things coming down, that the funding is going to increase from the state level or federal level. However, it's because the numbers of preschool students are going to increase due to the change in star age. So I think going down the road, I don't see that going away. Likely shifting a little bit, but we have a plan in place should that happen.
Okay, and so we, we have funding for about 18 preschool students. How many total preschool students do we have?
We will have 40, I think we just, we just talked about our lottery today. So we have three four-year-old classrooms. We're gonna have 15 students in each of those classrooms. About half of each of those are going to be identified as special education students to maintain our 50-50 ratio. And then our three-year-old classroom is bumping back down to part day. So we did a pilot this past year on a full day. Realized based on feedback and just kind of how it went, that part day was more appropriate for our threes. Obviously, if special education needs surpass what that day would be, we would need to extend. However, maintaining that AM and PM, and I believe we're looking at about, Beth, do you remember? Beth, do you remember what our numbers were for AM and PM?
For, oh, for threes? I think we're looking at maybe about like five low model pairs in addition to the student by E's. But it's a moving target because we have students coming in from our three for the year. So we usually start them over, the anticipation that more are coming home.
And who funds the other preschool teachers? So if one teacher and one para is funded by the grant, who funds the others?
The para professionals are through our IDEA grant, which is just a federal grant that we've had for, I mean, it's been for forever.
And that seems to gonna stay too?
That stays, yeah. That's, no, that's federal. We can't, and we can't really change much about that. And if I were to change what I'm doing it for, I have to provide justification for the state, and the rest have all been board of ed funded.
Okay. All right, that was my last question on preschool. And then, I do have another question, I'm sorry. This might be a collaborative effort, and I know it came about, do we have the student-teacher ratio for each class? Because I know that there's some like heavier classes than others.
It's all dependent upon, like the high school's much different than an elementary?
Yeah, but didn't you give that at one point? I just can't remember where I saw it.
It should be in-
Thank you, thank you. I'm like, I know I saw it and, okay.
Can you read the page number?
All right, got it. Thank you. I'm like, I know I saw it and I just can't, can't get to it. Hang on.
I don't know that it shows the ratio, but at least you'll have the enrollment.
Yeah, it gives me the enrollment, but not the ratio, so.
And there's no teachers here.
Yeah. Can we, can, can you, that might be a takeaway that Martha might know is the student-teacher ratio, or the administrators might need a moment to- I mean, I don't think they're gonna know off the top of their heads.
No, they wouldn't. They would know the number of sections in their grade for the elementary school, but the middle school, obviously the high school would be very different because it's based upon subject. And it's based upon classes like AP where you might have seven kids, eight kids. A tiny class may have a small, so it's different for every subject area at the high school.
Right, so I guess I'm looking for something similar to college when they're advertising. Like we have, you know, our average student-teacher ratio in college is 1 to 20. Like I'd like that, something like that for our high school. Like our, you know, most jam-packed class is 1 to 20. Our, you know, lowest class is 1 to 3. I don't know. And kind of give us an average. That's what I'm more or less looking for. And then just add all the other grade levels. I think it's a little bit more, it's easier.
I did tally some ranges.
You did?
So I did the ranges for like core classes.
Yeah.
And then especially like Scott, there's 18 courses or, see automotive, you have to cap that a certain amount, which you can only have 15 kids in an auto shop. I city stand or culinary room, if you want to be a culinary room, you have a level teaching station if you can. So the ratio piece I appreciate, but it's with the special ed pieces. So most of the core courses, the class range anywhere from 15 to 24 per section.
Okay.
There's different academic levels, so the classes are smaller. This year is the first year for incoming freshmen. We ran three sections of general level because of the needs of students that came in with IEPs. So that impacted other sides of the class. If you're opposed, I have more sections at that level. So that, there's a ripple effect there. The special ed course work, which the AP courses, special ed programs are academic electives, and they were between 10 and 17. They're definitely smaller. Some of the AP courses are on the lower end of the ranges. But then there's a likelihood that if we don't have enough staff, we'll have course requests. We can run five sections of automotive. We can offer two or three sections because that teacher teaches tech ed or approximately the way as well.
Yeah.
If we have one section by a bonus with 24 kids, we could run two or three sections of by a bonus. So there are some cases where we have the low, on the low side enrollment, but there's other courses where we can run more sections if we have more staff.
Yeah, okay.
It's a catch clean.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, trying to get an idea of it. When you're younger, right? Like it's pretty consistent.
So if I, Beth and Jill put you on the spot with your, how many kindergarteners per section to just give a ballpark so they're aware?
Sure. Well, currently right now, we have 170 kindergarten registrers for next year.
Well, let's go right now, current.
Oh, currently. Currently, we have 72.
So how many teachers?
So 76 teachers, so about 20 to 21 students.
All right, first grade?
First grade, we have 93 students, over five teachers. So that's about what, 18, 19? And then we have 134 second graders over seven teachers, so that's around 80.
So around that.
I'm sorry, can you peek kindergarten?
Yeah, right now, we have 124 students in kindergarten over six teachers.
And what was that?
So it's about 21, 20 to 21 students.
The other two are 18 to 19. All right, so let's go to the next school.
So third grade, we have about 111 students, so it's between 19 and 21. I think the class, fourth and fifth are pretty similar, 115, 116. Similar class sizes between 19 and 21 across the board.
And you find that manageable? Like that's a, like, is that the sweet spot?
It's, it is a sweet spot, yeah.
Okay.
It's very manageable. So with this, the incoming third graders for next year, it's above a class. So we're expecting to have seven sections of third grade and six of fourth and six of fifth.
And the only problem with Tuckett is the physical size of the classrooms in that back wing. It's tight in those classrooms. I have a teacher out here who's nodding. With 2021, there's not a lot of space.
Yeah, 21 students are not sitting in that room.
Yeah. So it's, that's a spatial concern, but we're not doing anything about that, so.
Beth, do you feel it's an optimal size?
Oh, yes, I do. Everywhere between 17 and 20 is, you know, is optimal.
Okay. Okay. And our middle school's okay too?
Yeah, class size is ranging from about 20 to 24. Each grade is a little bit larger, so larger class size. Grade depth about six teachers or grade level. That's between art, math, social studies, and science.
Okay.
That's about the general size of the class, 20 to 21 across the school.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any questions? Because then I have some questions for Rose. Just, I, more for my informational knowledge.
I have just a quick one. For our ECA magnet in Boad Transportation, do we share that with another town, or is it just our town?
I think it's just us. I'm gonna gamble and say it's just, it's just us.
I think it is.
I think every town's responsible for their students getting them there.
I'm trying to understand the ARPA. Can that, like some of the projects that you have with capital improvement, can some of those be put to ARPA, like the paving or the-
Anything can. It's up to the council to approve the spending of that ARPA money.
But do we have to present it?
Yeah.
For them to-
Yeah, we would have to come before the entire council, like we did, and bring any project. And I know you're, you're on a timeline now with, you're looking to spend that by when?
Um, probably this month.
Right, so.
How much is left?
Um, well, after we do-
Minus our 81.
Well, there are a couple other ones also besides your 81.
Big ones?
Seven, yes.
Rose, come on.
Hey, you came in at $2 million, your first request out of four.
And if you gave us that, we wouldn't have any problems right now.
And then you, then you said, oh, we'll give you a bargain. We only need 1.2 to 2 million. And then-
Yeah, we dreamed, we dreamed.
From, from, from two to 1.4 is a bargain.
Yeah.
So ARPA funding, we're probably down to maybe 150 to 175.
So we could ask?
We could put in again.
What we have to put in?
Yeah.
And then the other thing, I think, like you have down track, is it something that if there's a portion of the ARPA money, can they put it aside so we can build it up to?
Probably not, even if it has, the ARPA money has to be spent, I suppose.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, just asking.
But is there another way we could try to plan a little bit better for the future?
Well, ARPA money was, you know.
So when, it's like a done, when it's done, it's done.
But is there another, another way to do that? So how ARPA does it?
Another, is there any other thing we can do?
I mean, the, you know, that's what the capital accounts are for. It's for, you know, the town will look at if there are projects that raise to that level that it's building infrastructure or something else, then, you know, they would take that on.
So if we had a, I mean, to ask for this question, but I'm just trying to understand it. So if we had a plan that we wanted to do, like there's something that we have to plan to do, we know it's gonna cost a lot, and we're planning on doing it for four years for that, is there a way for us to start?
Say, you could, you could put money aside each year over a period of time. The town does that. And for your capital reserve account, so, you know, if, if-
Well, that's what a Fund 25 should, should kind of be for.
Well, that could have been-
No, not real. We should, we should be going at a zero balance. The town, what strategically we should be doing is developing a four or five-year maintenance plan. Right, so John Florio does have a maintenance plan.
Right.
How we fund that is, seems to be more of an art than a science, in my opinion. I don't think we predict far enough out, but we're getting better at it. And how we save the money, I think, is still a question, right? Because we have to operate close to zero, right? We're, our budget needs to be spent all the way down. We have a little teeny bit of wiggle room because we don't wanna, like I don't wanna have to pay the bill at the end of the year because we went over, because you'd have to pay the bill too. But I think if we said to town council, you know, in our budgets meetings, hey, coming up in the next five years, this is what it is. You don't need to fund us today, but it's that communication that I think is appreciative.
Right, I think, I don't know that we do that, but I think that would be great if there's a way for us to at least start some things, maybe.
If you look back at our capital request, a lot of them are repeat items that get on there because it's, we know we're not gonna get a certain amount of money, but it's been on the radar for a while. And when you get outdated buildings like we have now, and we're the biggest budget in town with the most square footage, when these things go, they're, they're big ticket. I mean, those-
Right, that's a good example.
The refrigerator and freezer are old. Well, they've been old for, yeah, 60 years.
So why is it, why is it a shock?
Oh, it's not, it's not a shock. We're lucky we got that much time out of them. And what we do is we repair them until, and that's just, that's the way it's-
Yeah, well, we repair them. Sometimes they don't make the parts anymore that we need to continue repairing them with and-
Right.
It's like any household, right? Like, we're like a household, right? With a $32 million budget, $33 million budget, right? But it doesn't mean when your refrigerator goes in your household, you immediately have the money to pay for, right? So that's where the kind of give and take comes in.
But I do think that we, I plan, like I know when we run a household, I mean, you put money, we have money, you know, just put them just in case.
We don't have that ability on the-
We don't, right.
That's what you're, we don't have that ability.
But can, I think if you look at like our capital projects right now in like regards to what you're saying and what Sean is saying, like number one, state, this doesn't need to be done immediately, but this is gonna need attention and it's gonna need it soon. And like number five is the same thing. Number five, it's been there for years now with paving. Like this needs to get done.
The track is another example. Like it's been needed to be-
Did we get the paving approved?
Well, there's a portion approved, so now it's additional money to finish the job. So that's what John spoke about in detail.
But I think when we look at number one, which is the track.
About Mazano. The track is one that, I guarantee you, 100,000's not enough now when you look at everything. So it's out there that the track needs to be done. Are we gonna be able to run track next year? Absolutely. Could it wait until the following year? Yeah, it would have to, but it's something that needs to be done.
So I think when we're presenting this stuff to town council, it's saying, this is immediate, but it needs to be on everyone's radar, so this is gonna have to happen soon.
If nothing got done here with capital, we're still coming back next year. We're still running this school district with everything that we did not get. I mean, if it's a crisis like the, you know, if the freezers are gonna go, yeah, we would have to go back and say, okay, we have to shut everything down here and find 81,000. Or go, and the town had that ARPA money, and that, that played out for us.
See, we're not allowed to save money. We're not allowed to have a savings account.
The 1%, 2%, it's like when you say you're, you're doing your financing for your home, with a $31 million budget, the 1% is $300,000. 2% is $600,000. So that's what we were, we were putting away over the last five years.
It sounds like it's, we have to ask to prepare for our fund on capital. On capital projects, you can do, we can do that, okay?
They could put money aside in that, in that reserve.
And, but do we do that?
Well, when we go and present everything, and if they say, well, listen, we're not gonna fund anything, we could say, well, you know, in five years, we wanna try to do the track, but you put 50,000 in each year for the next five years.
We haven't done that before, but I think that's a good strategy. We did that about 10, we did that a while back ago. A while back ago, we tried to do that, and just there wasn't, there just wasn't enough money. They were trying, you remember, Rose, it was part of the Long Range Planning Committee, and we were talking about reserves for all the different departments. So when they needed a fire truck or when they needed police cars, we were trying to do reserves. There just wasn't enough money to do it.
So the last time that you requested for CIP, for the track, was in 2014, 15, and you requested $65,000 and that was granted. And going forward since that time, because I have all of your CIP requests here, there have been no requests for the track. So I think what Kim is giving us is, is that all of a sudden your CIP shows 400,000 to redo the track. Yeah, it doesn't have to be done right away, but if you knew that this was coming up three years ago, could you have said, can we put $50,000 away for the next four years? So now we have half of, you would have half of the reserve for the track on there, whereas now it shows up in the capital at $400,000. And, yeah, we can run track next year, but it's gonna have to be done the next year.
Rose, for that kind of savings account, would we be saving it or would we be asking the town to save it on our behalf for this potentially earmarked project?
It's in capital, so it's in our CIP budget.
Okay.
It is a reserve. It's like the fire department gets reserved money for their equipment reserve, public work has equipment reserve. So we allocate so much money a year that goes into that reserve account. And so some of that money might pay for existing leases that they have on vehicles, but then there's also some that's left over so that in a year or two years, if they have another truck that they need, they have some money there that they can use as down payment or a case, the first month lease, because now the leases are running out, so just kind of replaces.
Okay.
So on your capital, those large capital expenses, like the track, you could, you could ask, you know, it's gonna, right now, it's gonna cost, you know, it's gonna cost us about 400,000, so we would like to put away X number of dollars for it.
But there's, there's a different menu for like the track. If you wanna, if you wanna-
It might be more than-
No, but even aside from what you did the last time for 65, we could do that again. We could repaint and do the track again for, but over the lifespan, if you keep doing that, the 400,000 comes when you're gonna dig the track up and repour a whole new surface. So, so if you wanna, if you wanna, you know, shorten for time, we did that in 2014, '23. It lasted nine years. I think the projected price, I think it was in the capital thing for 100,000. So that's going out, you know, nine years later from 65 up to 100,000. You could do that. You're gonna, you're gonna repair everything, cracks, paint, reline the track. You'll get another nine years out of it. It's, it's, what, where do you wanna put your money? And so for 400,000 right now, with where we're at, I don't think it's a good bang for our buck. 25% of that and going with 100,000 or somewhere between 65 and 100,000, you'll get nine years out of a track that'll be very presentable and which would probably make more sense.
But we have to ask for them to set aside some money for any of these capital improvement. And we don't, I mean, we had that, how much, 115 for the bathrooms at the high school that was never used, and now we didn't need it. I probably went back into the-
But it's a good thing we didn't use it because the building got torn down a year later.
Right, but, I mean, it was there. We never used it, so it got absorbed back. But maybe that could have been transferred to one of these capital.
I can't say in high school. I mean, if we were still in that high school, we probably would have put new fixtures in those bathrooms. I mean, it was, it was, it was a quick fix, kind of like at Tuckett, what we're doing. We're not doing the full renovation. It'd be over millions, over a million dollars to renovate those bathrooms in the building that day. This is just toilets and sinks and-
I mean, if you don't ask for them to set aside whatever they need.
Oh, well, we can ask for all of that. It's gonna come down to a number that the town thinks that they can absorb. We have what's called a mill rate. We all know that. We all know that there's gonna be a certain number that the council believes the town's not gonna wanna go over. So wherever we fit in with all the other entities that are putting their budgets in, we're the biggest one. We have over three hundred employees. We have the biggest buildings, the most expenses. Education is expensive. So the, the council's gonna have to wrestle with everyone who's asking for something and come up with a number that's gonna be palpable to the taxpayer.
Rose, what does two and a half million look like in mill rate for the average household?
Well, two and a half is roughly two mils.
And so what would that, right, but like, what does that break out to? Then, like, would it be a four hundred dollar increase a year per family, per household?
Two mils, I'm just trying to remember that.
The four mils.
It's dependent on your home value.
Like an average, average-
They say the average home value is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that would be seven hundred dollars. A two mil increase.
Okay, so, so we're saying a two mil increase is about seven hundred dollars a year?
Well, that's three, uh, three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty, okay.
So sixty a month. Fifty, fifty, five a month.
Yeah, you pay. So I just, I just, like, when, when we're doing the budget, I like to think that way too. You know, right, like, we have to think of both the children that we're serving and the parents of the children that we're serving. And so-
Which, which amounts to probably somewhere in the twenty to twenty-five percent of the total population.
Right.
So we'll have to take that into consideration.
Yeah, exactly. So that was why I was asking that question.
So people and, you know, seniors and everyone else that we have to look at.
Yep, that's why I was kinda just bringing that up. To make it, to make it real. It's the, it's the balance, right? And so we're, and, and just on one side of the coin, seven hundred dollars in a fixed income, how is a lot of money? So just, just throwing it out of-
When's the last time we raised by two mils?
Well, we, we have, I mean, I-
Okay, so-
But that was my question. I'm, I'm looking at a two and a half million dollar increase. That's what we're proposing, is a two and a half million dollar increase.
If you just took the board of ed budget, you didn't take anything else yet.
What percentage is our budget of the total budget?
You are-
So if you do the mathematics for what everyone else puts in, if you do the board of ed for what we need, how we're-
Probably somewhere in the sixty-five or higher.
Percent.
But then there's, you know, the other projects. This is just your budget, but then on the other side, like now, that is just, not on the town side, it's just all debt service.
Yeah.
So that's separate from all of the town departments asking, board of ed asking. Last year, when we, before we even looked at any more budget, it was a one million increase on debt service.
For the debt service. What are you expecting this year?
I don't know. I don't have that figured out. We don't yet, but my guess is it's probably still more. It all depends on what the rate listed. Last year, you know-
We hit a bump, right?
It, it went up and it helped us somewhat. I don't know if it's gonna be as, as much as it was last year.
Right.
Um, but that did help on there. But my guess is debt service is gonna be close to the same as what it was like.
Yeah, with all the-
But you have to, you have to keep the, the math in when you look at the size of what it takes us to operate. I mean, what's the next largest employer in the town? Behind the board of ed? Is it police?
No.
Twenty, are the officers twenty-seven?
No.
Twenty, last-
Twenty-two, twenty-three?
We're at twenty-four, I think.
All right, so that's, that's the next largest, the town hall?
No, I think that would first.
Well, that depends if you, I don't know what you're counting as.
Right.
You know, like, if we take all the town hall employees, that would be harder than the police departments.
I'm saying by, by building with the, the police department in town hall, public works, is there anyone greater than thirty?
I don't think so.
So my point is, we're, we're ten times, we're ten times any other entity. We have, we have well over five hundred thousand square feet of buildings that we came up with. So it's, it's really not an apples-to-apples comparison. We look at, we're the biggest part of the budget. We're the biggest, the big, largest number of buildings, the most capacity. Everything that goes into doing this with ten times the number of employees. So it's gunna look that way.
Uh, my question was simply, what does two and a half million look like in the mill rate? Because we're driving it, because we are the biggest employer. So we're, we're, we're driving it, so-
Like any-
I just wanted to know what it meant in real life, in real life. Because all of us will experience that seven hundred dollars, but so will our grandmothers, and so will, you know, the-
Some of us are grandmothers.
Well, the good news is, is they come, they come off to vote, either they vote-
So I gotta absorb it twice? Twice, you get it. The grandmothers are not getting it twice. Don't like get that rumor out there. But I just wanted to know because I'm, I'm trying to, I really want to be thoughtful about this.
If, last year it was directly one point, one point three million people amount.
Okay.
One point three. So if you're increasing two point six, that means it's roughly two mils.
Okay.
You're making a little bit of that.
Rose, do you have any questions for us while we're sitting here? Okay. I appreciate that. No, okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
I have a comment that I'd like to make. I'd like to reiterate something that I said at the last meeting. I fully believe that my role, our role as the Board of Education is to support education in our town. And I have poured over this budget because it was my first one, asked a lot of questions. I don't see anything unreasonable in here. And I think that our administrators, our administrative team and our central office team worked very hard to come up with a budget that they felt was appropriate for our town. We have to remember that the Fund Twenty-Five is essentially gone. Most of that money, as I read through, was used for items that could have been budgeted items, but we were fortunate enough to have that. We no longer have that to fall back on. One unexpected expense this year could put us in a, a difficult situation. I don't believe that it's my role as a board member to determine where cuts should come. I believe that's our admin and central office team's job to do. And I fully believe that we would not be penalized to send this budget through to the town council as it stands. And I believe that then the town council would take on the awesome task that is theirs to determine our new mill rate and probably work backwards and determine where those increases would be given or, or not given. That's their role, that's their job. And I believe that it's very difficult now to look at a budget and say where we would cut, not even knowing where our starting point would be. I would hope that we could move forward to a scenario where the town council, the board of ed, and all of the other people who submit budgets, it can be a little more amicable. I feel like, I have a friend who says that all these, these people are like angry divorced parents who are fighting with each other and blaming each other all the time for either not getting money or not having enough money. I would like to think that when the town council, my expectation would be that when the town council looks at all these budgets, that they do it in a non-biased fashion, that they set aside any personality conflicts they may have with anyone who's asking for money. There would be no personal agendas, as is the case here as well. I personally feel that we should move forward with the budget as it stands. Let the process work out. When we find out what the money is that we're eventually going to have, we could then leave it up to our admin team, who I know works very hard to, to make the cuts as best they can. And I, I don't feel that this budget came to us with a lot of fluff. I'm looking at my own household budget. I got oil the other day, a hundred dollars more than the last time I got oil. So we're looking at a, a place right now for everyone where things are more expensive. And I just think that we owe it to our, our students, our staff, our admins, our central office group to, to take what they've given us and then later on, take the amount that the town council feels that they can give us towards our budget and, and then work from there. I think we've asked a lot of questions. I think we've gotten a lot of clarifications on things. And if you would please pass along my appreciation to Martha. I didn't know she wasn't going to be here. She was timely and thorough with every question that I asked her. So I, I truly appreciate that. But those are my thoughts, maybe a little bit different than, than some other people have. But I really don't think we should be cutting anything. I think we should be in good faith going in and saying, "This is what we need. Give us what you can and we will take it from there and make sure that good things are still happening here in our town."
I will say, I'm very impressed that the administrators had such great answers, like, on the fly. I was totally not expecting the ratios at all. I, I was really like, I was very pleased that you had answers to so many questions right off the cuff. Anyone else have questions? Zach, I know you're a little slow today.
Well, I answered a couple of them already. Is, is there any way to capture an actual spend on the line items that we're looking? Like on these line, I mean, I know, we haven't spent all of it. That's the budget from last year, right? So we can't really determine the hundred percent accuracy what we're gonna spend for the actual year, but at that point-
This year?
Right. You can't give us actuals, like, actual to date? I mean, that's, I guess, but that would show, or maybe that wouldn't show what I'm looking for.
What are you, what are you looking for?
Well, okay, so the thousand dollars was budgeted and we're only, we spent like four hundred, but we're beyond the halfway point of the year. So why are we asking for, you know, more than what we were intended uses?
It could be different sports. Golf hasn't happened yet, and golf's a small team.
Non-contractual things we can't look at, you know, strategically, obviously. But I'm talking like, you know, the salaries, you know, contractual stuff, non-contractual stuff.
You're looking at non-contractual.
She does every line item, what the percentage that it's spent on from this year.
Right, well, I'm, I'm looking at, sorry, I'm looking at these numbers. This is the only numbers I'm looking at, right? So it shows, here's a budget number for twenty-two, twenty-four, or twenty-three, twenty-four versus what our proposed budget is for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right.
Then there's an increase. I'm, I'm asking for, here's the budget. What's the actual spend at that line item to date?
Right, so when she gives you, at her, her handouts, that's every line item.
Right.
And it tells you the percentage in that number.
Truly noticed.
So, so you will see that if you go back to every month that we've had.
Right, yeah.
So you'll know up until what she does.
I guess I'm not trying to do that math again.
So, but, but at the next board meeting, or when she gets back, she can send you the same thing that she gives you and you'll see how it's, we may be over in some accounts for insurance, but we're under in maintenance of, you know, maintenance supplies, whatever. So that, it's live, it's real, and it's always there.
Yeah, I guess that would, didn't give us that.
You could see the change.
Right, that's from this to this to this. That's this thing. So I guess what I'm looking at is like-
It's always, it's always live with what she gives to you and the percentage that it's spent.
What did you, you know, what's her actual spend?
Year-to-date, we don't have year-to-date.
Year-to-date. Sorry, YTD. She does give it out, right, monthly? Right, I get that.
Every, every meeting.
We got, what, three, when does the budget end?
June thirty.
June thirty. So we got four, four more months. March, April, May, June, four more months. So if like, year-to-date is thirty percent of the budget, but we're asking for an increase in that line item, you know, what's the logic behind that? That's what I'm trying to get at.
We, we haven't spent thirty percent at this point.
I'm just giving you a ridiculous example.
If you go back to the one percent, two percent, and when we get to the end of the year, in June, if we have three hundred thousand dollars left from, and you divide that by every line item that we add.
Right.
That's phenomenal budgeting. So it's, it's not a bad thing. You shouldn't look at it as a, as a bad thing if I have one to two percent. You're almost hooked for anything that we go over, personally.
I guess the question still stands, right? I mean, you know, what's the year-to-date numbers? That's all. And I'm, I'm not asking to do that right now because it's like impossible.
Saying that you get that every month. You, so Martha gets back-
So then I'll send her an email and say, "Hey, can you please give us the current number for year-to-date for each line item?"
What percentile has been sent to every line item? That's what she does.
Because we would've gotten that tonight had you been here.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And we only have one union contract coming up, right?
Yeah, we have the other ones, we're all done together. The pairs, we're not in that cycle for their years. We, we used to do them all different years. So everything came up at a different time with the budget season and its projections. It's what we think, the, you know, the economy and what the town is gonna support and what's gonna happen. And I think you got a flavor tonight of, you know, some of the challenges that you're gonna have. And that's the reality of it. And that all plays into when you build your budget for what you anticipate is fair and equitable for all those without putting the custodians against the pairs, against the nurses, against the teachers, you know? That's the task, that's the challenge when we do that. And we do the best we can with the data we have over the history of doing this to make projections in an economy that's changing daily. You put a hundred dollars more in your oil tank. That's the reality. Go get an egg. It's, it's, it's all of what you're talking about times eight, seventeen hundred students with everything in these massive buildings and contractual obligations. So even if you take any of the new stuff out, the reality is, is where we're at with that, with special ed costs, what we talked about. Any other questions?
I don't have any other questions.
Are we gonna come back next week for a special ed?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I don't think, I don't think there's any more questions to be asked, Zach. Are you okay with all of the answers? I mean, do you think you'll have any more questions for us?
I mean, you know, I just, I looked in hindsight, I probably should've asked for the actual year-to-dates, you know, last week or the week before last week.
Well, you expected them for tonight for the meeting, but Martha's been out sick all week.
I didn't, I didn't really expect any, sorry. But, you know, I thought we were talking about some other stuff, but it is what it is. I'd like to look at them further, is what I'm trying to say.
So are we ready for a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five operating budget request in the amount of thirty-five million, nine hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-six cents. Second. I did, I'm sorry. Sorry. Yeah, I'm writing this.
Chairman Holter?
I'll pass and vote last. I don't want my voice to influence anyone else on the board.
Chair now for you?
Yes.
Secretary Ziana?
Yes.
Julie Vann?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
No.
Kim Dawson?
No.
I'm sorry, no. Victoria Lanza?
Yes.
Chairman Holter?
No.
I moved to capital, it passed.
Yeah, four.
It passed.
It did.
It passed. Yeah. Yes, you moved to capital. Yeah. So with capital, can I make a suggestion that maybe if there's still some ARPA money, that we can maybe ask for, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but maybe that athletic storage building? Maybe we can ask for that out of the ARPA money?
I'm sorry, Rose, how much was left in ARPA?
She said around one fiftyish.
175.
150.
Is there anything that you're aware of earmarked now that is going to be accepted that you think is going to go through that would cover all of that 150? So is it probably not worth us?
The ship has sailed.
The ship has sailed.
So it's easier.
We've got what we got.
Okay, so there's no money, there's no money. So let's.
Okay, then move on. I do have a question though when we're looking at this. We have the P's in, so are we just, oh gosh, I'm so sorry.
Take out of capital 81 in the bathroom at TBS minus that from that.
The walk-in freezer, the walk-in cooler in the bathroom.
You could subtract the capital amount of 1263733 minus 81, excuse me, and whatever was in.
20.
20.
What about the paving? That's it to be determined. We leaving that out or?
No, the only thing, two things you're taking out are the refrigerator, the freezer and the 20,000 for bathrooms. Those are done.
So what, I guess I'm asking, what number are we using then for paving? It says to be determined.
Well, there's already monies in that I would leave it.
90,000, right? We had allocated, I think.
Yeah. John spoke to that.
It says TBD, it says TBD.
Right.
I always feel like when it comes to capital, they have line item veto on it. So I always, they can, they can pick and choose on that, you know? So I always feel like we should put our request in as it is and let them.
We're going to have estimates by the time this.
By the time it goes, right.
We're going to have the gym floor estimate, John's working on that. We'll have a paving estimate. It's just right now, we're still working on that.
Right.
We have to drain away from the building over at TBS from the roof, that was the problem. So there's other things, we're not going to know that until.
Right.
So I guess I was asking, so how would we know what amount to put in the motion? That's why I was asking.
How about this?
If you put the total amount in, they can say, well, this much.
Because it's TBD, right?
We got it, I got it, she's got it.
But then they can pick and choose what they want to do.
We can brainstorm it over here.
Good.
We're going to, we're going to have ample time.
I'd like to make a motion to ask the town council for a savings account for the North Ramford High School track. They can put away whatever they feel they can put away for that for the future.
That just contradicts everything that Scott said earlier about asking for the 400,000 that he thought that was a waste of money and you could redo the track, resurface like you did nine years ago for a hundred thousand dollars. Or put that number in at a hundred thousand dollars.
Well then, then I'm going to ask for a savings account for $50,000 to put aside. So if we determine whether it needs to be painted and, or redone, no?
Well, again, it's the direction you want to go in. If you want to get a real estimate 65 from nine years ago to do the same thing now, I guess maybe 100 maybe?
Right.
Just so folks out there and. So get people to come in and say, okay, the repaint, redo the firm company that did it before, what would it cost now to do the same thing that you did?
If we don't have clear direction on what we do with the track, why don't we remove it? We should either have clear direction on how we want to repair it or we don't know. So if we don't know what we want to do, 450.
414,000 versus 100,000 is a huge difference.
It's a huge sway and it's a huge product differential. One is like, okay, we're going to get 10 years. One is a rebuild that should be lasting us 25 years. So who do we want to be when we grow up? Do we want a new track or do we want to paint the track? Because you can't get it both ways. So do, do we want to ask town council for, you know, 50 to 75,000 a year so we could get this new track done? I mean, how bad is our track now? I've not run on it in quite some time.
You can compete on it, there's no question.
How long is it going to last?
It's faded in color. It lasted nine years the last time.
How long will it last now without doing anything?
With, I don't know how it's going to weather with everything with the winters. Could it be two years we can get out of it maybe? I don't know. I mean, if you grind it and you do the whole thing over again, it's a whole different story than coming in and doing seal patchwork and painting and lines. You could get nine years for a hundred thousand dollars. So you'll look at your bang for buck on, you know, or do you want to absorb 400? It's a lot of money.
Todd, what do you want? It's your school. What do you want?
Who are you talking to?
Mr. Todd.
He mentioned his name.
I think the one thing to consider is that when it was done in 2014, the life that it lived at that point is shorter than the life it's lived now.
It's an old lady.
So it's another decade.
I got you.
I would be, no, because you can only surface or resurface these tracks so many times if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
Well, they spray, they spray the top layer of the rubberized beads back on it. So the whole thing is just sprayed again versus dug up and redone. It's like, it's like when you turf a field. The biggest part of the expenses, the grave, the rock formation, the sand, the topping, then the turf sits on top of it. 20 years later, you roll the turf out and you roll it back down. So your initial cost of 1.5 millions to do a turf field, 20 years later, when you do it, you're not doing any of that prep work again. So lay the skin out again, it might be a couple hundred thousand dollars. So it's no different than with your track.
Then why is there 415,000 in here?
That's a total rejob.
Total grind up, dig up and do your track versus.
So it's a matter of.
Putting the rubber coating on.
It's a matter of doing the whole track over brand new now or painting it for 100,000 and waiting and hoping that we have the funds when it may cost.
I guess the next question.
I don't think we can have it both ways.
I agree.
No, I'm saying that's what I'm asking.
Whether it's your, those are your options. You can spray rubber on it and paint it and it'll look brand new. Or you can dig the whole thing up, do it over again and then get your warranty for, you know, whatever it was.
How long is?
From when it was done originally to when we just did it in 2014.
It was a sintered track when it was hired.
Right.
This 414.
It was brushed sintered.
Okay.
So how, how long holds this track roughly?
It's going to be 20 years.
Yeah.
Right.
Are we getting it again before this has to go to town council? No, so we have to decide this tonight.
Is this 414?
We don't have the figures.
That's okay. We'll get the figures.
Is the 414 a newer number or is that an older number?
I'm sorry.
The 414K, is that like a year old, two years old?
But he's going, he'll get a new number in there regardless because he's, right?
Right. So that's, I guess what I'm saying is, so we need a new number if we're going either way, it sounds like, right?
I think we need to decide what way we're going and then we'll figure out the number, right? We're just, I mean, if it were me at this point.
Just redo.
I would just redo it.
If possible.
I would just redo it. And I would ask town council to put monies in savings so that we can have a plan to do it in, in three years. That would be, and get a current estimate, knowing that it may go up a, you know, a percentage. But then they're already on the same page as us knowing that too. So that would be my recommendation. And that was my motion of 50,000 aside. Okay. That was my motion.
Yeah, you're square.
Well, right now we need to get an actual estimate from John because you said you needed a new estimate from John. So we're going to ask for $50,000 now and we'll be asking for $50,000 every year until we realize that the track needs to be done and then we can ask for the remainder. But at least there's a savings account, right? They have a savings account.
The question is, if you say 50,000 a year, it's over 400,000. So you're saying you're going to go out eight years.
Eight years.
No, I'm saying we're going to start our savings now. So that maybe instead of it being 600,000 that town council has to be on the line for all at one time, it's 500,000.
Okay, but I think, but I think she's saying.
Until you get the total amount.
Right, but you said that we could use it for a couple more years.
I'm saying, so I said a couple of years, but I'm saying if you do your 50,000 math equation out to get to whatever it's going to be from how many years out? Six, eight years to get to 400,000?
No.
No, we'll just have a pot of money to put towards it. And then if it's three years from now and we have 150,000, then we have to ask for the remainder.
Delta. So, okay, so you're only going to do a partial savings and then you're going to.
Like a reserve, like a reserve.
No, I know, I know how a reserve works, but if they don't want to do it in three years, if you lose it then.
It's called good faith.
Okay.
Wait, they're funding part of it now, aren't they? So are we saying we're leaving the track doing nothing this year or are we doing the painting and the research?
We can't have it both ways. Nothing this year, asking for the savings and then we'll, you know, I think maybe all of us can.
Call it a reserve.
Call it a reserve, not a savings account. Can we have our savings account, please?
Then I will rephrase my motion.
Call it a reserve.
To ask the town council to set up a reserve for the track and put 50,000 into it this year. Who second to me?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How'd I know that was going to be easier? Okay, I'll go the rest.
And then I would like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's 2024-2025 capital budget request as presented, taking out the walk-in freezer, the walk-in cooler and the Totucket Valley Girls bathroom and the track. So that was a separate motion. The rest as submitted and we will have updated numbers before their meeting.
I'll second. Can we have a roll call on that one?
Chairman Holter?
Yes.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Secretary Ziana?
Yes.
Judy Bannen?
Yes.
Jeffrey Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson? Victoria Lanza?
Yes.
I'm going to assume we don't have a finance report today.
I don't know how you can make that motion without a quote. You don't have a quote because there are two TV's there. So you don't have a number.
Right, well, those are the projects we want submitted and we said that we wanted to have quotes prior to our next meeting. So we'll get quotes. We can't have it both ways. We have to vote on it, right, by the 29th?
You didn't vote on the final quote that you're sending to the council because you have the TBD and you're not needing it before the end of February.
You should back, back out the 81 and the 20 from the 1263, start with that.
Because the 1263 does not include the two projects with TBD.
So you have.
So how do we add in the two projects? We can't, she's saying.
No, back the other two out, you're going to come up with a number.
Yeah.
The 50,000, you're going to add to it. So plus 50 to that.
But we have TBDs. You can't put anything in for a TBD.
So it's going to be omitted.
It's got to be, it's going to be TBD.
Right.
It's got to be removed. That's the option.
If they're not, if they're not on there, they're not included in that number. So just back out the 81 and the 20, add the 50 and use that number to go in.
Yeah.
1, 2, 6, 3.
But then we have to remove the Jerome Harrison paving because that's the one that doesn't have a number.
You're going to back the track out and put that in at 50.
How are we, how are we going to, how are we going to take out the Jerome Harrison paving?
1, 2, 6, 3, 7, 3, 3 minus 81,000 minus.
So we already had 90,000 allotted for that.
20,000.
That money set aside. When we were to ask for just a little sum to be put again to add to that 90.
Might know how much that.
So, so I know the Jerome Harrison when it went out to bid in April of last year and it was not afforded. A little bit at that time for whatever the work was, how it specified, a little bit was, I believe, 140 in the 140 range.
And we have 90 already?
Right.
So plug, plug a number into that to differentiate.
Yeah. I'm at 850.
What?
Thank you for that tidbit.
What's this guy? That was all.
I was like, is she going?
The bid on the.
I'm like, is she really going to let me struggle because I really can't meet next week, so.
That's what John explained with the whole process at the last, the budget was about what they put aside and what it was. I guess.
But we have 90 perhaps.
Now.
66, you're putting 6, I would put more than 60.
So if you go 90 and 60 and go 150 on the page.
Do we know when we'll be getting those quotes or?
Well, do we have to put that, we have the 90 set aside, so I don't have to include that.
Correct.
No, you just have 60.
68. I did 50. So 860. So if we take, so here, watch me and Zach. So if we take the 1, 2, 6, 3, 7, 3, 3, and we subtract out the 81,000 which we got, we subtract out the 20,000 for the bathrooms. We're adding in 50 for the reserve. We're taking out 414,063 and we're adding in 60 for the remainder of the paving. 858,670. 859.
Were you getting the 859? Or are you asking for 50 here and not 414?
Correct.
So how are you getting up to 850?
So we take that number and I subtracted out the 81,000 that we got last night, the 20,000 for the bathrooms.
All you have to do is add what's current, right? So look at, this is what I'm saying. So 50,000 here. What about the gym floor? What do we, what do we put?
You have to take it out. We don't have a number on that.
Okay. And we have the 150.
Did you get Judy?
I got 859.5, so, but I'm doing on paper.
Yeah, 859.
But what am I missing? Am I missing like items?
Did you put in the track, the 50 for the track?
We have to add in 50 for the, you have to add in.
No, it's because you took the 414 out from the original one.
Yeah.
Right. The North Ramford track is 414, you took that out and replaced it with 50.
You have to take that out. Are we still doing the 20,000 for this?
The bathrooms came out of TBS.
And then we're doing this.
An 81 came out for the freezer and cooler.
Here we go.
Okay.
I forgot a whole stack of paint, so that's what I was.
Then my new. I missed that at first. Then my new motion, Mary, will be. To approve the superintendent's 2024-2025 capital budget request in the amount of 859,000.
I'll second.
859. I just said 859.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, please.
And then are you going to rescind the original?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Haffner?
Yes.
Secretary Ziana?
Yes.
Judy Bannen?
Yes.
Jeffrey Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Lanza?
Yes.
I make a motion to rescind my previous motion of as presented. Okay.
There we go.
We good? We need a second on that and a vote?
Oh, second, second, to rescind.
George Joyce.
To rescind.
Second.
Second.
I'm going to guess we have no finance report.
Well, the only report is that tonight's report will get an email to you in a narrative form and that spreadsheet will be.
Tracking.
Current year up to date, what's left in every line item. So you have that.
Kindergarten registration?
107 to date.
High, low, average?
Average, where we're at. We'll probably go, you know, up to around 120 through the summer possibly, up around there.
Okay. Town manager pending.
Renovation, town manager report, nothing pending right now. Renovation project, all the windows went in at the high school for the front foyer in the rear entrance point as well. Moving the code of what we wanted for safety glass, so that got done. Weather prevailing, the project's moving along nicely. The brickwork has started. I think they're going to start pouring the concrete slab within the next several weeks over the gymnasium. And then it, once they get that buttoned up and the glass goes in, they'll start with movement on the interior. So it's going well, but it's been lucky that it's supposed to get in the 50s next week, which will be a real good week to work. Obviously the rain tomorrow will slow them up, but they're, they're making up for it. That's it.
All right, committee reports. Nothing on negotiations, nothing on budget and operations. Was there a curriculum meeting?
Yeah.
Whoa, back in business.
Well, it's me. We talked about the high school super ring grant. It's program in operation at middle school servicing our sixth grade students who didn't make proficiency on our grammar balanced. So it's a, it's a support system to improve our test scores. That is funding three full-time tutors at the school as well as leadership site and after school sites to implement that. We have about 120 students that we're servicing. And that extends throughout the school day and after school. So far, students are enjoying the experience, get more confidence. Staff are probably a little kind of disruption to the schedule at the middle school, having kids coming and going all the time. So we talked about the overview of that, how it's going, implementation, the second and more like it, was talking about the K3 reading legislation and what that means for our district. The associated right to read grant that goes along with that. To summarize, essentially the state has required that all districts adopt one of their state approved models for curriculum to support the science of reading, for helping explainers, really the area of phonics, vocabulary, grammar and some kind of mansion. So that requires us to kind of go in a different direction than the primary curriculum model that we've been using. There's been a lot of work done by our team to develop a plan and we're using some of that grant to purchase new materials. We're looking to pilot some of that work this year on a small scale and be able to implementation next school.
Very nice.
Who's on curriculum? Oh, you just got back, but do you want to add anything from the meeting?
He's just going to, were you going to send it to the whole board or just us?
Already done now.
Okay.
Oh, so you'll.
It's in our email?
No, I sent it to the secretary. I can get it to the board.
Thank you.
I don't know, I don't know if I have it or not, so.
It's in New York, the board group email.
He doesn't have that.
I don't have, I don't have that, okay.
We'll send it to him.